America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all. All in the Texas way, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and invisible.
You remember the rules. You're up. I'm pretty sure you're talking about something else that another board member has a concern about too.
No, okay.
You go ahead.
So this is just more informational for y'all. I noticed the degradation in cell phone coverage with AT&amp;T here at the campus. We'd come up, pick up my side, and he was running late, couldn't call out. I couldn't call him. Our texts were either not being delivered or delayed, with all of your discussion about security and the doors and more police force concerning to me. Working for AT&amp;T, I was able to talk with one of the engineers that works in our area. They came out and found a setting, found some stuff they could adjust. So, and my unofficial scientific test came back out, made the same calls, same text. Communication's coming through better, so sorry for the teachers, because the kids' phones will work better, but there is better coverage at the campus, so.
Wow, thank you so much.
Yeah, but if y'all ever needing these.
Thank you.
Thank you. But if y'all need any more, I'll put myself out there, answer any calls and track down the right people.
Careful what you wish for.
I know, it's okay, it's okay, so.
Thank you so much.
When did all this take place?
Yeah, two days ago. It changed.
Okay, all right.
And to quote my teenage ink son, I asked him how it was, he said, "Well, it's not no bars, so that's a plus."
That's true. I hear about it all the time.
It's tough to get coverage out here for any carrier, but it is a little better, and hopefully a better chance of teachers just getting out.
Yeah, it's always been right down there, the chili bowl effect.
Is it good? Is it?
There was an adjustment to the cell site. Probably be on me to try and explain it in part.
I just want something for my minutes.
Yeah, 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 there you go, there you go. So, anyway, so, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for taking the initiative, I really appreciate that.
Okay, we'll go on to item number three, our 2020 bond construction update. We have Tim here to give us a quick update on punch lists and getting things kind of wrapped up in some areas, and some areas are hot, fast and furious, I guess. So, Tim?
Okay, so, first slide. On the financial side, we're still holding commitments at about eighty-eight percent of the total budget, with uncommitted at twelve percent. We've spent about eighty-six percent of the committed portion of the budget. On the project allowances side, as of the last updated in our system, we have the remaining balances, you see there, totaling about three hundred and ten thousand. The elementary school, we are projecting to run out, go a little bit under, and we will, we are planning on tapping probably the high school to cover that. It's not going to be that large an amount, but as I explained before, since all these projects are on the same contract, they essentially share the contingency allowances, and we're able to make those moves between projects as we need to. With the high school, it's fairly safe right now, and we think we'll be able to move some of that over to help the elementary. Next slide. Library wing is under construction, the concrete floor slab was poured today, that's down. We're expecting the structural steel to ship on Monday, was the last update I had. The guardrail that's going to be placed in the courtyard on the uphill side of the concrete trickle channel, which is at the top of the retaining wall, to the, I guess I'll say, to the east of the classroom addition, that's getting fabricated this week, it's supposed to ship next week. Expansion joint covers that were still lacking inside the school, we're in progress getting installed. We have a little bit of site chain link fencing pending. Commissioning agent is in the building, that bullet here is incorrect, we've got the testing and balancing done. It's actually the commissioning agent who's working right now in the building, and he just posted a report that we need to review, see where he's at on that, but he should be getting pretty close to being done. Area B, which is kind of the core center of the elementary school, where the office administration suite is, and some of the special ed classrooms, we had some wood doors, which we reported in previous meetings, were backordered. The last date I had on that was they are shipping on October fourteenth. Dallas, do you have any state data?
Still in shipping order.
Okay. And then playground equipment, we still are looking at a ship date of October twenty-first. I think they're supposed to be, Paul, are they going to fabrication next week, or was it this week that they were telling me?
They're showing, shipping by the twenty-first, we should get them by the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth.
Okay.
We're going to get both playgrounds, we're going to have to store them on-site.
Okay.
And they'll be able to install the, most of the fire lane right away.
Right, so that, I think that's the early grade playground. That area's been graded off, so it's getting ready to take that playground. The other one is next to the retaining wall, that's on the end of that library addition, so that area is still kind of an active construction area, so we think that one is not going to be as safe, have kids over there, so we're probably going to have to, we'll have the equipment here, but we probably want to delay the installation of that until we can get that, that area to become safer once, you know, the building shell gets up, so. So, next slide. These photographs are already out of date. When they were taken about a week ago, we didn't have the floor slab in, but now it's in, so we've got a concrete floor slab, so we're ready for steel. Next slide. Last update I had on the library addition completion was February twentieth, I think that date's under pressure now, and looking like it might slip into early March, but we're tracking that right now. Go on to the next slide. High school cafeteria expansion, the devising wall's been opened, so you can see the expansion from this side of the construction line. We still need some expansion joint covers installed in there, and it's for finishing, completed. The canopy outside is also incomplete right now, and is being worked on. Right now, I've got a date of about November fifteenth for turnover on that. Dallas, you have any update on that?
Still not.
Okay. And we had exterior metal wall panels that are kind of going in on the upper part of some of the walls, on the additions was underway. Landscaping was going to trail behind that, because we have to use some equipment to go over the ground underneath where those panels are, so, which would, of course, damage the landscaping, so we're going to have the landscaping come in behind the wall panel work. Parking lot sealing and the striping, that's been done. We had a little glitch with the band pad, but that got turned around fairly quickly here in the last day or so, and so the line painting on the band pad, which is the parking lot out in front of the auditorium, has been completed, and the band was out there actually this evening, practicing on it. HVAC, testing and balancing, I apologize on that bullet. TAB is underway right now in the high school. They did find some deficiencies, that was reported to Weaver, they turned that over to their subcontractor, the subcontractor's already responded to it, and we now have the TAB consultant following up on those, to make sure they were corrected, and then they will resume their, the rest of their testing, and get that ready for commissioning. So, commissioning, I said here in progress, apologize once again, on that bullet, it's not started yet at the high school, just TAB is underway right now. On the schedule, right now, I've got the cafeteria addition, November fifteenth, forecasted finish. Also, site work the fifteenth, which is a little bit variable based on the metal panel installation that I already talked about. If you go to the next slide, this is the middle school. Exterior looks about like you see in the upper left today. That wall to the right is about twenty-five percent done, as far as the stone veneer, so they continue to do stone veneer work on the outside. The upper left, excuse me, the upper right, you see the hallway status right now. Classroom to the lower left, and weight room to the lower right. We are expecting weight equipment to arrive October twenty-fourth, I believe, for both the high school and the middle school, so we're going to be looking to bring that into those two spaces, and with the idea of trying to get this addition at the middle school ready to turn over around Thanksgiving, so the school can get prepared to start switching over and taking, emptying out the science wing, so we can get started on that during the winter break, and that'll go on into the next year. And with that, that's the end of my update. I'll entertain any questions for myself, or Paul, or Dallas.
All right.
I will give, commend Weaver Jacobs on the band, was the one I heard, that we weren't going to be able to practice on it any this week. Talked to Dallas, and he got his crew out there with just regular spray paint and dotted all the markings, so the band could practice, and then he quickly got another contractor in here within probably twenty-four hours, and got the paint for us. And bands got UIO marching contests Saturday, so it was important that they not miss the practice, and so they made it happen, so just wanted to.
Thanks, Dallas.
Tim, thank you. All right. Thank you.
Okay, next update is the 2022 bond, and we've got Reed thirteen, Casey from Sledge Engineering, to give us an update.
Good evening. All right. Loving the sunlight. Dallas took the blame for the sunlight just now, just wanted to point that out.
Awesome.
I told you that was an enduring trait, just owned it immediately, maybe nobody's seen it, Dallas. Okay, last month I promised you a little faster update, so I will go much more swiftly through this. We'll jump right past this agenda. Please, Holly, and go on the acronym page for you. I do want to highlight attitude for you, because I know you're reading these every month, so the SAC is the Student Activity Center. You're going to hear that one in just a minute from Huckabee. And then baseball and softball, I just had to point out that we use that acronym a lot as well. Okay, moving on. All right, so, Birmingham County, we've spent about $250,000 of your bond money so far, it's not even showing up on the chart right now. The Dropbox link that is live now, you'll see that on the next slide, it does have an actual check register, so if anyone wants to go read every check cut so far, you can actually go to the public Dropbox link you got right there on the website, if you click on that logo where it says click here, you can actually find a PDF of the check register. So, if anyone's ever have questions on that, just let us know. Okay, thank you. Go ahead. So, through projects updates for you, athletics, detention, and then SAC itself. All right, on athletics, we have quite a few things happening since we saw you last, last time you had grass on your field, now you don't have grass on your baseball or softball fields, it's official, I've got a photo we just took today. So, we did actually get all of our city permit approvals completed for the work. We had our, the Geotech report from Rob Kistern has been finalized. The very big news is, we have confirmed officially, we do not need any select field for baseball or softball. If you recall, if you're listening, if you recall, we had assumed two different levels of select field needed. There was twelve inches of select field assumed by Helles going into it, thinking that's probably what's going to happen. We assumed another six inches beyond that, or more, maybe now, just in case, and you carry that money with us through our board at Helles, we don't need any of that eighteen inches of field. We're going to get all that credit back, it is going to be several hundred thousand dollars coming back, we'll work through the details right now with Helles. So, this is great news, it's a good job for the way you approached that, and a little bit, little bit lucky as well, just based on what the ground was out there. So, that's good, and getting back to you all. Number three, the pre-destruction meeting was held onsite with Helles. We were there with Darren the coach, we had a good walk through there. We are looking at a possible fence addition, getting some pricing from Helles to consider for the south end of the track. They're doing their bleacher work, they're going to be down in that area, they'll have a fence contractor out there for baseball, of course, because we'll be doing the baseball fence, and we thought, well, what a good time to at least get some pricing for the south end of the track. Just letting you know that's underway. Basically, you can drive a vehicle right onto the track, the football field, if you're inside the gate, so just looking to consider that, see how that goes. Bleacher design is still underway, the scoreboard vendor, we had a good meeting today, went really well, we'll have a lot of reports on that for staff tomorrow. We're also taking a look, just letting you know what's going on, we're going to look at pricing near the end of this project for trash can receptacles, benches, and tables, just with our site walkthroughs with staff, maintenance staff, and coaching staff. We noticed you've got a bunch of end cards for trash, I'm saying it's not working, it seems to be working just fine. You've got some older tables and benches up near the concession stand, so we just brought this up, we'll just do pricing, it's free to get pricing, see if you guys want to take advantage of some of that contingency money coming back, and maybe do something like that. That wouldn't necessarily be part of Helles' contract, probably would not be, just something you might purchase forever. Any more to follow on that. So far, on schedule, another budget with that list. There's just one picture of, that's the star part there. But, just to prove a point to you, today, your baseball field looks like this.
Oh, wow.
Your softball field looks like that. So, there's no grass, we're not turning back now. All right, detention, parking, and access, not a lot to talk about. Haygood's doing a great job, we've had some interim design meetings. They are working on several different pathway options for both accessible paths and non-accessible paths from the SAC building, down the fieldhouse, and bleachers, et cetera, as well as where to put the marking. And finally, for the Student Activity Center and the tennis project, tonight, here at the second, you're going to hear from Huckabee about schematic design, and notably, we have the Construction Manager at Risk opening earlier this week on the eleventh. We did receive some packages, we only got two packages, we're hoping for four or five in this market, but I will say, both packages we got were really top-notch. And so, I'm very happy with at least the quality of what we got, and so we're looking forward to that, the Simmons did look at, I know this on your agenda later, and I just talked about the processing, so we do plan on coming back to the board on the fourteenth of November, it's a regular meeting, hopefully for board selection of your Construction Manager at Risk. Just a quick comment about budget, this is the squished-down budget, not the expanded budget for you. That bottom center number is really what we want to draw your attention to. Now, this is our live budget, we change it almost every day when we learn things, certainly changes every week. Last time you saw this budget, we had a balance remaining to the good of about a hundred thousand dollars shown, that's us forecasting out, obviously not bid out the SAC building and whatnot. If that number's gone up, what you're looking for is to make sure that number's positive. If it's not positive, we have lots to talk about, so, again, that'll change as we move forward. Thank you, Holly. And on the schedule, some minor adjustments that are notable, but they don't really change the outcome too much. Baseball softball's still tracking for opening season here in January, late January that is. Football and soccer field between football season and track season, that is also tracking well, same with track. The stadium bleachers are actually looking to be done much sooner than we're showing, but we're not quite done with the design, so I'll leave the schedule alone for now. And everything below that, detention pond, the SAC building, tennis courts, and the parking lots, we just cleaned up the schedule a bit, we have them kind of all scattered, not knowing how we're doing it, but right now, it looks like we'll put, probably put all these items in the package with that Construction Manager at Risk we just talked about, and we've found a way to get the detention pond for baseball softball handled, potentially some of the works, prior to the SAC contractor showing up, that allowed us to clean the schedule. End result's about the same, everything's still finished, the same, but it means a lot. Upcoming items, the CMR selection we talked about, baseball and softball field are already under investigation, bleachers moving forward on design, and same with parking access. That is all for this report. It's correct.
You mentioned the scoreboard, is that for baseball and softball?
Yes, sir, that's correct. So, we're, baseball softball, we're also even talking about options that we might want to put in the Student Activity Center or not, we're just going to see what options are out there for, so, it might be, yes, sir. The goal for baseball and softball is to get those installed before the season starts, to replace the boards. They have boards out there now, but we certainly would have to relocate baseball to minimum.
Okay, good.
I know this was a goal that piled up the budget. On Prop B, on your forward-looking investments, how much of that is land?
Right now, we have four and a half million dollars sitting in the land category, just directly, just sitting right in there, at the top of cost. Of course, the biggest news is the majority, more than half of your entire budget, you haven't authorized yet, so the ten or eleven million or so for the SAC building, and of course, any balance you have could go back that way, and the contingency money we're about to get back from Helles already. You have more than five million dollars available for land, as estimated on the SAC right now.
Any other questions? All right. Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to item number five, possible approval of schematic design for Student Activity Center. I've got Natalie Wells, Jason, by accounting him in a couple of months, we've got Casey here. I don't know exactly how we want to handle this, I think we've gone, how we want to...
I just want to add a couple of comments, so.
Okay.
I just want to get out of the way, make a quick comment. In the rationale we gave you, it just talks about schematic design, I know this board's seen that before, just want to remind you, this is just a phased approach, schematic design is something that's important, we'd like to hit this moving forward, we're pretty happy with this package we've gotten. He's got a lot of spirit, he's staff has seen this a lot, and so we possess this a lot, we're happy with where this hits. The next steps of this, we're starting finalizing things. When you're approving schematic design or considering approval tonight, it's really just the size of the building and the location of the building itself is the biggest thing that you're approving. Where the actual doors sit, and what color things are, and what the numbering on the field, that's really after tonight, anyway, so Huckabee's gotten far enough on to show you the preview of many of those things, so don't sweat the details too much. Colors, masonry, metal panels, not tonight, but you did get a render, so you could have a good vision. So, just want to point that out to you, but I'm sure they'll be happy to give you the details. You'll take your time.
Awesome. Well, again, my name's Natalie with Huckabee, this is Jason with Huckabee. We're here to present to you the Student Activity Center. I think we can skip through to about page ten of the presentation booklet to the site plan. So, this Student Activity Center is going to be, oh, next one, is going to be located at about where the practice field is now. It is approximately fifty-four thousand square feet, and the field itself is about fifty thousand square feet. And you can see there, we have added in the two pairs of tennis courts, additional tennis courts. We do have some site elements here with some walkways and passes. Those are not finalized yet, we've been going back and forth with Haygood engineers, and we've been getting some really good conversations with staff here at the school, and just, we're going to be reconfiguring some of those site walkways to make it even better to navigate the site. So, there was a request to have restrooms for tennis activities, and so there is a restroom. If you want to go to the next page, you can see on the bottom left-hand corner, there is a small restroom there for the tennis use. It has a rolling grill gate, so you can close that when the facility is not in use. And again, it's a very easy access for the students, it will have stairs and an ADA route access to that restroom. And then we walk into the Student Activity Center here. This is a very multipurpose space, it's a tall building, so that a lot of activities can occur in there. We have it marked for football, softball, baseball, soccer. We have the numbers a little different, so you can use it for a band as well. We have a track on the right-hand side with three lanes, with a pole vault, pole vault pit. That's probably not the technical term, but with the, at the end, a location for the mats for a pole vaulting. Really neat design that was discussed with the team members, is locating some adjacent to the track, some nice softball and baseball nets, so that they can be used for practice within, but also when the nets are down, if someone's out there throwing a football, the net also protects anyone that's on the track, so it can be used at the same time, so that's really useful for this space. And then up on the planned north corner, up on the northeast corner, we have the necessary items, a fire riser room, ample storage that has access inside and outside, an electrical room, a small janitor's closet, and an IT closet as well. This will be a turf surface inside, with, again, the markings, as Casey had mentioned, we can change those around if we need be, this just gives you a great visual of what the facility will look like at this point in time. Do you want to add anything else?
Natalie, can I speak?
Yeah, please.
So, let's say in March, February, March, if by this design, we can have soccer practicing, we can have baseball and softball inside the cages practicing, and let's say it's raining, and then we can have our hurdlers and our pole vaulters all working at the same time, and by having the nets where they're at, they're lowered, so no ball, no soccer ball will be able to get into the track. So, I mean, you're talking about a multipurpose facility, and you have three different groups working out, or four different groups working out at the same time, but I think that's, you know, pretty good, so. But anyway, just want to share that.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. You're hired. It also has a passive system, there's airflow that will go through from plan west, plan east. We have vents, and we have fans that will blow through, so that will help a lot with air movement to keep the players and students cool as they're in this facility working out.
To that point, if it's ninety degrees out and seventy percent humidity, and it's raining, what do we anticipate the ambient temperature being inside?
That I couldn't say, but I can most definitely find out for y'all and get that information.
My concern, right, is like, oh, practice is canceled, but actually it's canceled because it's also ninety-seven degrees inside.
I haven't heard other schools having that issue, because with the airflow like it is, it'd be enough draft in there to be, I'm not saying cool, but it'd be warm, how about that?
It will help dry the...
Circulate the air.
Yeah, so the airflow will come through, you'll get a nice movement of air. We do have overhead doors as well, so we can open those up to have even more air, but yeah, it is, we also have heat though, too, for when it does get cool. I know it's not as much of a concern as the heat here in Texas.
They're doing two-a-days and a hundred degrees, and this place is going to feel like a padded hall. The airflow is really nice, because the players will be sweating, and so it's not really just about ambient temperature, but it's about actually pulling the heat off their body, which the sweat helps with, so if it's stagnant, sweat doesn't help you that much, but if you have airflow moving, then your sweat actually works a lot, right, and it down, so that's a, that's a really important feature for making sure that they're...
Did we get input from the other extracurricular activities?
I know Creighton, I know, we're talking to Peter, the band director, on accessibility for all of the drums and all that, but when we get to this part of his platform, he'll be, he'll be discussed, we hadn't got to that part yet, because it's still being looked at as far as permitting and whatnot. Peter did have input on the, on the numbers, making sure that one side will correlate with the numbers that he's needed, and I know Coach Walker, and don't know about Coach Cole, but they've been talked, they've been visited with by Coach Phillips about the batting cages and things like that.
Yeah, the way we messaged the community was, this is an extracurricular facility, so I just want to make sure that he works with everyone that we communicated, including cheerleading, robotics, whatever, whatever we communicated, to make sure that they have feedback, and they're all aligned with regards to design, to make sure that they're handling this correctly. The second thing, it's my understanding, or, let me take that back, is it my understanding that there should have been some coaches offices in this?
that there should have been some coaches offices in this? Is that a second?
That'd be a second phase.
Okay, second phase.
Whatever. It's, how is it?
Yeah, on this one, if you scroll down to the bottom, you can kind of see of this image, a future locker room space. It could be two stories, one story, so it is factored in there. We've also factored it, to the bottom right, it's the dashed-in line there.
There's enough room there. If you go back to page four, maybe, you might could, yeah, on number two, you'll see the dotted line, that's for future.
And then finally, on the bathroom, do they have to go through to get to that?
They do not. So there is, there is a separate entrance. You do not have to enter the Student Activity Center to access those restrooms. We do have a coiling gate we're showing, so that it can be closed down, and that it's not always, if you wanna lock it up for some reason, you can.
Understood.
And there's drinking fountains there as well, which is most excellent for outdoor activities.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on the floor plan?
So on the earlier point of, we're at the schematic design, some stuff has to come, so I don't know if I'm jumping ahead, but.
Ask Wade.
A lot of grass surrounding us, but no access to cement. Think about, players wanting to go from perhaps the football field to the Activity Center, right?
So we are working through that right now, that with Haygood Engineering, this is a beautiful and hilly site, so we're working right now with the best ways to get access to the field, to the fieldhouse, from the PAC to the SAC, and the future parking lot down below over to the field. So there's a lot of conversations that are occurring at the moment to make sure we can get everyone around the site safely.
And it's also, the band will be, because they will have to come down, and they've got the big drums, they will be consulting when we get to that point on how wide, you know, and whatnot. So, but yeah, we've been working on that pretty hard the last week or so. Where does that, what's that look like? What's the grade and things like that? So. And then I know we anticipated Phase Two being the locker rooms and coaches offices. Starting to surprisingly hear about some goodness in other parts of the budget. Like, at what point do we consider whether or not this is something we can do now versus kick out the can for the? I don't, that's another $20 million or?
I would say, I mean, just generally the price of even a modest fieldhouse addition. I think after you get the bids in for the whole Activity Center, January, February, then we'll see what you really have left and what you're gonna do with plan and time to there.
Sure, it's hard to be too far.
We talked about this in the long-range planning exercise, the fieldhouse office space was gonna be about the same cost as the shell, so it was.
Got it.
Was it $6 million?
It was gonna push it over 30, 30 cents million if we did that.
Good question. Thank you.
I do have one last one.
All right, let's hear it.
I may have missed the conversation, just the choice of land on the practice field we have today versus this big chunk of land between the bleachers and the.
And the tennis courts, yeah.
I'll answer that one, because I was part of that conversation for the bond planning. So we had several conversations on putting it in this location, the one you're talking about, and even closer, further south, closer to where potentially you can drive. And ultimately, the spot that's going between the tennis courts and the field is planned for parking. We even talked about flipping those. And ultimately, we leaned on Coach Phil's preference, where he thought it would be most effective for reusage, particularly with its relationship to the PAC, and having the band folks be able to come out there and get to it. So we weighed the pros and cons of altering locations.
We also looked at a future building, like a future high school or whatever the next building over here will be, and would, if you move this building up to the practice field as far as the parking and whatnot, and we don't know when that would happen. So it was discussed a good bit on what direction.
Casey, I know we had discussed future growth plan last we spoke. I don't know, is that something you're looking into? Is that something we kick off?
That'd be something we'll bring to y'all here in the next month or so, about what's that look like.
Mr. Walker, anymore?
I said that was my last one.
So the next few images are renderings of the interior and renderings of the exterior to give you an idea of how this facility could possibly look, not written in stone. As Casey mentioned, this is schematic design. The thought process was to have the exterior especially match what's going on at the high school. And you can see in this one, the field, the very high ceilings, you can see in the background on the right-hand side, those softball and baseball drop-down screens, our nets for protection, and then we have padding along the walls as well for protection. And then at the end zone, we didn't show it in this image, because it would kinda hide everything, there would be a net that comes down with the field goals on it, so that it could be used for practice for that as well. And then the next few images give you an idea of the exterior matching what is going on here at the main portion of the high school, and that is where you would enter, where the restrooms are in that front area. And it's a metal building, it's functional, but it can also look really nice, too, to align with your campus. Any questions on the exterior images or interior? So for the schedule, we are looking at wrapping up documents in December. It will go out on the street for bidding early in the year, and then we're looking at construction for completion in April of 2024. And budget-wise, we're looking on track. We've been running numbers, and we're excited to get the C Mar onboard, the construction manager at risk, so we can work with them as well at the last portion of the design phases here.
The rationale behind substantial completion instead of just completion?
It's actually a contractual term, so it's an industry standard term that everybody utilizes. So the two terms are substantial completion and final completion. Substantial completion basically means that the building is ready for y'all to use it, which is the most important thing, right? Let's get the kids in there and let them be able to use it. It doesn't mean that there aren't gonna be what we call punchless items, miscellaneous small things that are having to be addressed after that point, but really, we wanna make sure that y'all can get in and use the facility to what you wanna afford in the timeline that you're expecting.
I never saw that in any other or other.
Yeah, so once you can go in and get in there, that doesn't mean that they don't have, like, it's like when you move into an apartment or a move-in checklist, you turn it in and they come back and take all that stuff. It's that time between substantial and final, that's where all that happens.
Good question. Does anyone else have any questions today?
Questions or comments?
Really appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you.
We're excited to be working on this. It's my one. Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
So, guys, we'll need a motion. There's a recommendation page in your packet, if you wanna read through that, but we'll need a motion to approve, if that's a desire of the board. So who?
Second.
Kevin made the motion. He said he seconded. Any additional comments, questions, concerns? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five oh.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. If it's okay with the board, I would like to, we have our principals here.
Notice we had a full ass.
Yeah, had a, on the back row.
It's like we were telling you, finish for it, and all of a sudden you have to show up to the meeting.
So, we, you know, to honor their time or respect their time, we want to.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'd like to go through the district improvement plans. That way, if we have any questions, we have the principals here, as well as Ms. Jackson and Ms. Posack here, and Dr. Lofton-Bullis. So at this time, I'll let Dr. Lofton and Ms. Posack and Ms. Jackson talk about the improvement plans, and then if you have any questions, we'll start getting principals here. A lot of work on these. If you'll notice, the number of pages takes a lot of time, and I wanna thank them for that, and so I'll turn it over to.
Twenty-two first.
Why don't we let them go first, mine's the long one.
Oh, good.
So.
Elementary?
Okay.
Started elementary.
Uh, I guess.
I guess you should have done a review or?
Yeah, just any major changes.
Any highlighted changes, any big changes, things like that.
I love when it gets to the first.
Okay, so I would say probably just highlights for the elementary school is, it's no secret that COVID continues to be a parent in our academic performance of kids. And so really, what we're really focusing on this year is our campuses all going through the Texas Freedom Academies, which are required by the state this year, but it really is great timing, because it really is the area that we see that our campus is needing the most assistance with. We have our third graders now left kindergarten with COVID. First grade was really spotty, so it's affected all of our kids on our campus, and it's really evident in their ability to read or not read on grade level. And so we're really seeing a huge gap there. I did wanna draw, you know, some of the numbers don't look really great, and I want everyone aware of that, and we're working on it, but I do wanna sort of add a little bit of context. So we know, two years ago, we left for COVID, then you had the virtual year, which was just sort of trying to survive. We were back last year, but it wasn't really normal. We only had 92, I think, percent student attendance, which is a great. And then the previous year, we had 315 staff absences. This last year, we had 836. It's almost five years worth of school days that teachers were out because of either personal illnesses, family illnesses, you know, all the rules about you must be out this many days. So really, when you take student and teacher attendance together, and take into account that a quarter of those teacher attendances were not filled by substitutes, so we're just trying to kinda make it through each day, really great instruction didn't have an opportunity to happen on a consistent basis. So we feel much better moving into this year, that not only do we have a focus that we're all working to grow together on, to do better for kids, but we have our kids there, our teachers are back, we're getting subs to pick up jobs. So I really think it's on an uptick, so I don't want you to look at the plan and feel like things aren't going well. They're getting better every day, so.
Any questions for elementary?
This may span across, so I'll just ask it and it does, I guess, and answer, but as soon as we talked before, the data is not normalized anymore, it has been thrown, you know, it's gone within the last two years. So that being said, I guess you, how are we coming up with the data to establish our plans to make sure that since we don't have the normalized data anymore, like, are we going to other schools to see what they're doing, to see how they're making sure, or we're making sure that whatever lessons on their part, we're incorporating what they're learning, or what they're doing. So modeling after other schools, because they're going to do the same thing that we do, right? So I think utilizing that data is really needed, because we don't have old data to utilize. So that would be one, and then, as well as maybe state information or evaluation, whatever it is, so that we can get that data and decide, okay, this is what we need to do to move forward. Does that make sense? So what are we doing?
So I'll tell you, we haven't, I haven't spent time looking at how other people are doing things yet. I think right now, we know some of the things that we need to improve on, right? So it's not quite time to go look up elsewhere yet.
Got it.
We kind of agree, yeah, X, Y, and Z need to be corrected first, before we start looking at deeper ways to improve, but that's definitely a lot of Phase Two, right?
Okay.
I would say what we've really tried to shift is from just making, judging ourselves based on this one benchmark score and turning it into a growth perspective. If you notice on our campus improvement plan, we changed our goals to be growth-based. So right now, our goal is that every student will make at least one year's growth, because we know they're not where they need to be. So instead of continuing to just look at, okay, how many kids reach X amount on STAR, well, that may not show you guys all the growth that actually happened, right? We continue to just look at how many kids reach the end of your reading level, expected reading level. Well, this kid was a 10, and they needed to be a 25, and they back to, you know, 24. Well, they're still not a grade level, so we didn't do anything. So I'm really trying to help my teachers see that as well, that we are making growth. Just because we're not hitting that ultimate goal right now, doesn't mean that good things are not happening, so that they can stay focused and encourage that we keep doing what we're doing, we're going to continue to see the growth. So right now, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to switch to sort of progress, focus, instead of just the end result.
Perfect.
That makes sense.
Thank you.
And it's worth mentioning, particularly like elementary and intermediate, like, STAR data is not, no longer normalized, and is it ever really, right? But we use measures like DRA that really haven't changed COVID, not COVID, they've been around forever, and so that data is more meaningful from year to year anyway, and, you know, because it's not impacted, it is norm reference, right? So, yeah, STAR, STAR data, you know.
Yeah, everything's out of luck. I'm just trying to understand, what do we do to go get data?
Yeah, so when you're looking at Lex files and like measures that aren't impacted by global pandemics, right? You know, you're not looking at achievement as much as your skills, and so that's easy. And honestly, we only have one grade level of STAR, so that STAR tends to not be a really strong indicator of success at elementary, because we're trying to measure growth starting in pre-K, kinder, you know, and so using measures that are pretty universal, too. I mean, they're widely used and accepted, you know, in most places, and so, so using like reading levels, and it also helps us intervene, because we have interventions that match, you know, those reading levels.
On your survey, Carrie, do you just send it out, it's to parents and stuff in your campus?
Yes, I'm assuming you're talking about the.
Yeah, I was reading through the survey stuff.
Yeah, it was sent to all of our parents and the string, through all of our typical.
Right, right.
Communication.
Do you get good feed, a good number?
I would assume we had about.
I didn't look, find that number. I wasn't looking for it.
I guess I did not put that, I need to add that.
That's okay.
It was about 60 parents, so it's not great, but I felt like it was.
At least they're responding, you get some sort of.
Yeah, to see some trends and things, so.
Yeah, I like.
Overall, they were positive, so I felt like that was a good, you know, we're heading in the right direction with parents as well.
Yeah, I think it's very interesting information to see.
Was that the first you needed it?
I think it's in, it's in all of the district. It's in each campus improvement plan.
Maybe you hadn't since the year prior, maybe we took the off at some point.
We did a special survey.
Yeah, you had some special COVID survey.
Well, I mean, every one of the plans, they should.
Yeah, it should be good to see movement, right? Snapshot for this plan is interesting, but if, whatever.
There were only a few.
The volume placement from 70 to 90% was celebrated.
There were only a few measures on the survey that were altered. It wasn't a massively different survey, but like some of the questions, for example, about parents failing inviting on campus, you know, seemed inappropriate, right? Given that we weren't allowing parents on campus. So, you know, most of the questions are repeats from years prior, but it was truncated to match sort of our reality.
Situation, yeah.
It'd be overwhelming when you get all in your inbox, but they're pretty interesting when you start reading through them.
Any other questions or comments for Ms. Walker? Thank you. All right, next, Ms. Sullivan.
Hot seat.
So, I'm gonna echo a little bit of what Ms. Walker said. This year, we're looking at growth. So something that we're doing at our campus is we have started doing screeners. It's called Match Scanner, and it measures the annual progress. One of the problems we found last year was that we didn't have a good, we didn't feel like we had a good baseline where our kids walked in at to the beginning of the year. So we wanted to start screeners, and they first walked in, beginning of the year, so they'll be knew right where our kids were at. And yes, we have STAR, but STAR, as we know, isn't everything. So we wanted to do that, so we started that and did our beginning of the year assessment, and then we'll do it also in the middle of the year, as well as the end of the year. And just a way for us to track growth and make sure that our students are moving along. And then the other piece we're doing, there's a couple of things that I'm gonna say about, but also, we're looking at our lead time. And lead time is our R2IPO, and what stands for, what I need. So during lead times, our hall block during the school day, the end of the day, and it can be intervention, it can be GT, it can be speeches, for whatever that student needs. And so we're looking at our lead time, how we can make sure that we don't really ever try to change these. So that's one of our focuses for this year. And then the other piece is that the last two and a half years, we've been through a pushing field delay because of COVID, it just was kind of an effect. kind of an effect of it. So looking at how we can give these back to our building. And, um, so one of the things we're doing is we have a literacy night coming for our end of October. We have a bunch of performances in December. We have a science night in January. Um, so we're doing some fun things, trying to get families back here in the building and make them feel welcomed and just let them know that they're part of this too. Um, so that's what we're gonna do, sign anything for happening in our middle school.
That's awesome. Very positive.
Questions or comments?
It's great to see you getting families involved there. I know, uh, most parents, even, I mean, myself, as soon as they got out of elementary school, we were like, yes, we don't, we don't need you. Stay home and don't come near the school. But that's not what anybody said, but that was the kind of the feeling that you got. So that's neat that you're doing that.
Okay, Mr. Holt?
Uh, last thing, uh, Ms. Walker and Ms. Sullivan, forgive me some time to come up with a presentation or something. Uh, no, I would say, uh, I tell parents this a lot is this is the, this has the feel of two thousand nineteen as much as I have felt. Like, like we've had the last two weeks, like, we've had a lot of fun with, with our, our first dance was unbelievable. Like, it's the craziest thing ever. Uh, you know, our pep rallies are back and like middle school pep rallies are an odd combination of, and we actually have a quiet room. It's like, kids, if it's too loud, just go to the dark room and just chill out, like, cause it's loud. There was a picture we, we saw the other day of, of the pep rally, and it was like a perfect example of exactly what it is, cause you had kids screaming and then other kids were like holding their ears. And it was like, it was an amazing picture of, of just, so I feel like, you know, we're getting back, uh, a little bit to where we want to be. But I think for us, it's always been a problem of how we intervene with kids who are struggling, right? And this was a conversation I actually had today with a parent where, you know, the time at middle school is an issue, right? We have fifty-three minutes and then you're moved down, right? And then, and so elementary, intermediate, there's, there, and, and high school, there's more time in the, in the, when you're with kids. And so it's, what do we do with that? And so for us, uh, we're trying to figure out advisory and trying to make advisory the best time to do that. And advisor is hard because you've got four hundred and fifty kids and some of those kids need intervention, some kids have all A's, right? And so it's just hard to balance that. So we've actually redid it, so we're pulling groups. And so I think our intervention during, um, advisory is gonna be a lot better. But the, the problem with that then becomes is you're adding one more prep on teachers and then the resources that you, that you use for those teachers is a challenge as well. So that's in, in the CFP is just talking about resources for teachers, um, who need, you know, need something to help struggling kids. And that's, you know, through COVID and everything, the biggest struggle that we've seen is math because, you know, two years ago, when they, when our eighth graders were in sixth grade, well, they were part-time, you know, they had C days and everything. And so it's hard because you, you miss a little bit of math and that sixth grade, and that goes to seventh grade, and that goes to eighth grade. And so that's, that's been, that's been a struggle. And then our last part of, of that is just trying to find out where all the kids are. Um, and so in, for our meetings, for our PLC meetings, we've really talked about like common assessments throughout the grade levels and, uh, subjects. So everybody's taking the same, and it's not a monster, uh, test or anything like that. It's no more than ten questions, but then we can look at and say like, okay, where are we? And then what are we gonna do about it? And that's probably the, the biggest thing that we're working with to, um, now, I will say, you know, it's, it all comes at, at a price because during advisory, I was, we work on UIL and the teachers are like, well, I don't know how to do both. And, and that's, that's, that's hard. And so, um, we're working to do that right now as well. But, so that was, that's been our big focus is intervening for our struggling kids and finding where those gaps are and trying to move those gaps.
Eric, have you and your team discussed or thought about an A, B, day type situation? You give your staff more time to students?
Um, yeah, we've talked about that and we live the, live that. Um, but I'll say, I mean, an hour and a half to our middle school is, is too long, you know? I mean, but our kids got really good at kickball. Um, you know, because they're, we're gonna go take a break, right? And it's like, oh, math and science, we love it. And they, they use it a lot, but for, you know, some of the other, like, the classes are, you know, were dead. We give ninety minutes with the same sixth graders. I mean, if you send ninety minutes with the same sixth graders, that's gonna be crazy, Ted. Uh, so, uh, yeah, we've talked about that, but it's just, you know, it, it was not appropriate for, for middle school. And, and then we talk, this year, we switched to seven periods a day. We took just about fifty-three minutes in class instead of forty-five, which has been better. You know, adding eight minutes is, has been better. I, I think in a perfect world, you can go like an hour, an hour five, that would be great, but I, I haven't figured that out this yet, so.
Questions, comments? All right.
Say what you will about standardized tests, but looking at these scores, your team should be very proud. That's great.
We do feel pretty good about, um, instructional where we're at.
Mr. Taylor?
Just kinda echoing what Eric said and the two ladies, so it feels good. This year feels more normal already. Um, obviously pep rallies and things like that are going well, but just comments like, man, I'm getting through my curriculum so much easier and quicker right now than I did the previous years. The kids are picking up, so the trajectory's nice. I guess it's like the old coach in me that says, you know, there's a reason why we're a B. I would be actually concerned almost if we'd have stayed at A and took all that instruction and all that quality learning that's going on in the classroom and removed it with COVID and our results would have been the same as it was before. It's kind of like, when I play golf and I get mad at myself for an errant shot, and then I start questioning, I say, well, how much have I actually practiced this? Now, if I hadn't practiced it, then naturally I should be duck hooking it or slicing or whatever. It's like, we didn't have that quality opportunity for eighteen months there to, uh, have students engaging in conversation, having a dialogue and conversation that's so rich that increases the learning going on. So it's not shock that we went from A to a B. So the co-coach in me says, don't panic. You know, we were on a good trajectory before. What has the district been doing? What has the central office done to support us on the campuses with things like fundamental five, things like capturing kids' hearts, things like Kagan strategies that kind of got us to where we were at prior to that? And don't panic, don't change your offense, don't change your defense, don't do something drastic just because the score changed a little bit. Stay steady, continue to go the direction you're going. So we're making a huge emphasis at the high school. We created a problem statement that says, hey, we've, uh, we've had to have the opportunity to do the things that are rich instructional research-based strategies over the course of the last seven years. So we have a theory of action. Our theory of action is if we buckle down and focus more on the fundamentals, if we specifically, in this case, fundamental five, do some of the other things that we've been doing, that we're gonna go back on the right trajectory. So don't panic, let's just do what we know we can do, let's do it with more provision and stuff like that. So you'll see that in the campus improvement plan. You're not gonna see a lot of drastic changes, but you're gonna see more of an emphasis. We emphasize, and this comes from the top management district, we call them the four pillars, but the four areas that we're really focused in are PLC, RTI, and PDIS and SEL. I know they're acronyms and everything, you know, all of the letters, but response to intervention, okay? We're also looking at the social emotional learning of the child. Those are two big focuses. The other two periods are professional learning communities and how we can learn from each other. And then the last one is just a positive behavior, you know, system where they know how to behave out there in the hallways, in the classroom, but also in other areas. So four major pillars, you know, rising tides raise all ships. So if we all get really good at fundamental five, I'm here for Michael Panter in the welding class, or your Wendy Phillips in calculus A, B. If we're all focusing on those five things, those five research-based things, then everybody's gonna get better. We don't need to like to start this curious set of, putting fingers in holes in the damp, but let's just do something that's fundamental and right. Prove.
Good point.
Awesome.
Questions, comments? Mr. Taylor? Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thanks, Stu.
All right, and now we've got the.
Three minutes.
I'm not, I go, eight to seven pages for those of you who, this is about forty pages less than normal. So we've actually streamlined, if that's helpful.
I'll schedule three hours.
Yes, I mean, I am happy to go through this page by page.
You call her tomorrow?
Yeah. As a recurring theme, right? Um, so March nineteenth of two thousand twenty, I have an email from, um, Kagan, um, setting up a district-wide Kagan strategy training for the entire district, um, K-12. We were gonna rent the room over at, um, K-O's and do a big training there, and it, it just killed me to cancel it, right? I mean, it was a lot of money too, by the way. We really worked hard to budget for it and put it in place. And for those of you who don't know, Kagan is our, like, engagement strategies, right? And then we essentially spent a year and a half, uh, you know, doing really good work, but not best practice work, right? Like, there wasn't, engagement was almost the opposite. You know, part of our, our learning model, um, includes the fundamental five, which we heard Mr. Taylor talk about, and one of the tenants of it is power zone, teaching in the power zone, right? Like, being close to the students, engaging with them. Well, we spent a year and a half saying, whatever you do, do not teach in the power zone, right? Because you don't want to get anybody sick.
Sit me back.
Right? Small, purposeful talk is another, you know, part of it. You know, turn to your partner and discuss. There was none of that either. So, you know, we, that, that impacted our instructional practice whether we wanted it to or not, right? Um, and so, you know, in echoing, you know, their sentiments, this is, this is the year where, you know, it's time for us to get back to, to what we do and what we do well and do it well again, right? Um, uh, you'll see that this, uh, plan really does focus on, uh, those same, uh, four pillars. So we met as an instructional leadership team in December, um, to really talk about, like, how are we spending our time? Um, we, we wrote, um, like, the fires we were putting out every day on little pieces of paper that were shaped like fire, right? Um, and then we started to categorize them. And those categories really kind of naturally fell into four areas. Um, and that obviously leads us to, to, you know, tell us where we should be spending our, our energy, right? Um, and so those four areas are outlined in here. Uh, we, Michelle, um, helped me last year build like a framework for the district of MTSS. Um, you'll hear that's kind of a new, a new acronym that's kind of, in the last two years, right? Um, multi-tiered systems of support. And so rather than make that feel like something new, it's not really something new, uh, but it's looking at the systems that you have and tiering them, uh, based on student needs. So we looked at, um, our current systems of professional learning communities and curriculum, um, response to intervention, uh, for students, um, and then social emotional learning, and developed a tiered system of this is what it looks like for everybody. This is what it looks like for students who are struggling but not immensely, and this is, this is what it looks like for students who really need higher levels of support. Um, and the majority of our improvement plan, um, is really focused on those four areas. Um, um, other than that, um, you know, there's a lot of statute-based things in here. So on occasion, if you see something that you're like, why are, why is this in there? Um, typically it's referenced with a statute afterwards. If you see a bracket with some Texas education code, that's why it's in there. We have a lot of things that are required, um, and a lot of policies that are required to be, um, placed in there. But, um, you know, this was the result of five very long, um, meetings, uh, in the spring. Um, and I, I do feel like it really represents where we need to put our energy right now. Um, and I'm happy to answer questions if you have them.
Yeah.
I'm on it, Sai.
It's outside the scope, so if it is.
It's good.
Feel free to say so, and then we're good. So problem statement to district, for first, uh, PLC and curriculum processes have not been consistently implemented?
Correct.
So I'm gonna stay away from where the lack of support and accountability came from up to another day. Mine is there's a difference between implemented and developed. So are we saying that it was developed correctly and then not implemented, or was it not developed correctly as well?
I would say that's campus-specific and, and people can, you know, our campuses, it really, I mean, a lot of it does depend on principal buy-in and leadership, right? And so, um, we've got places where PLCs are just kind of the way we do things, and it is sort of ingrained, and there are places where we haven't quite built the understanding or, or the systems, right? And some of it's finding the time to make it happen. It's not that we don't want to do it, it's not that we don't believe in it, it's that protecting the time. And so, I mean, I would say all four campuses are different places and for different reasons, and it, and it would be hard to pinpoint it on one thing, but, you know, I will say that, I mean, as a district, we recognize the need for additional support for those processes. Um, and I think providing additional staff to actually work with principals and build that, that understanding, right? They don't have, you know, colleagues really, um, you know, inside the district, obviously. And so because it all looks different, um, and, and it looks different in a small district as well. So even going to our neighboring district is not super helpful because they have a lot of things we don't have, they have a lot of dynamics that we don't have. And, um, we are looking at a conference this spring for professional learning communities specifically built for small schools and with a lot of singletons. So singletons are, like our high school, we don't have twenty-one sections of Algebra I like a big high school would, right? We have a few. And in a lot of cases, we have only one, one section of something. And so there is nobody to talk to to go, hey, you know, this T, ooh, I'm really not sure how to assess this. What are you doing? When you don't have that, that, that's kind of the crux of the professional learning community. So the secondary system is inherently sort of at a disadvantage in a school district this side. I will say, like, for elementary and intermediate, they have teams that got time sort of built in, so it, it's naturally going to be, um, something that is, it just happens more naturally and more easily, um, at the elementary level. But for secondary, it is a challenge.
Got it. To that point, and Stu and Eric can talk to this, you know, if you want four or five Algebra I teachers, well, that makes that teacher have an extra prep. You know, if you split, split their, split their teaching assignments up into like three or four different subjects, so you can have those teams of four and five to, to meet. But then now they're spread so thin, trying to teach all, so the secondary is tough sometimes to, to manage that. When you're a smaller district and you don't have four or five Algebra I teachers to, to come together and, and meet during those PLCs.
And I think that's where the initial question came from, is where are we getting the data to be able to put this together if we don't have it internally? Or we go outside, wherever it may be. Um, that being said, for this question, I get it, you have a problem statement, we have a root cause, and what's the solution? What are we going to implement to make sure that going forward, we are developing and implementing for the problem statement to PLC curriculum processes have not been consistently implemented?
I mean, Eric, that is.
All of this.
I'd like to introduce you to Tina Passak. Um, you know, really, it, and, you know, it's been really purposeful for us to, it would be really easy, you know, as we grow, the responsibilities that have been placed on the school district, we don't have full departments, we don't have a safety and security department, we don't have, you know, it would be easy to, we've tried really hard to protect her role because that's kind of what happened, you know, to be honest with me, you know? Like, it, it became the last thing instead of the first thing. So we want to make sure that for somebody, it's the first thing no matter what, right? To help support those processes on the campus. I mean, in most of, most curriculum development is not super data-driven. I know that, that might be difficult, you know? Some of it is, you know, that, that knowledge of this skill, you have to be able to do this to do this, right? And so figuring out what are those priorities out of my hundred and fifty-five teacs, right? There are some that, you know, because they create leverage for later on, right? Or they are just essential, whether or not it's tested or not, right? I mean, that's part of the, the consideration, is this a heavily tested standard? But it is not the deciding factor, right? And so, um, so building that knowledge base of the teachers, of being able to look at their standards and know what they mean and, and help make those judgment calls, right? And it changes from year to year. Right now, what might have been, you know, a priority standard three years ago in mathematics may not be any longer because they've got a, they've got a scaffold and skill down here that they need to work on first, right? And so that's the thing that I think, um, once people understand that curriculum is never done, this all gets way easier, right? But, I mean, building that understanding of like, you're never done. You're never, ever done with curriculum work. It changes every year, every group of kids, right?
So why, why do you say the solution is Tina Passak?
Well, I mean, basically, yeah. No, it's really, it's not blame, but, I mean, we understand that our campuses and principals need more support for instruction, right? And so, you know, I'm glad, I'm super grateful to have an end for intervention. So we have two individuals who are fully committed to those two areas, right? Um, and so I think that will help us move the needle of just helping to provide support and attention and accountability for those. attention and accountability for those things, because I think that's what's been missing.
Okay. Thank you.
I may have missed something, because it was like two hundred pages of content.
I'm sorry.
But it seemed, but it seems like any reference to STAR was kind of generic as a measurement versus specific subjects. And I'm just looking at our district-level performance, and, again, I'm not a, an administrator, I'm not a teacher by profession, and I look at this and it sounds like we have a math problem at La Vista, we don't have a social studies problem, all right, relative to everyone else in Texas.
Yeah.
Again, using this as one metric measurement, there's lots of things to measure. If you took our entire eighth-grade algebra students out of the, you know, makes math looks a lot worse here at La Vista. So, like, are we thinking about in that context about a more focused approach to certain core subjects that, I mean, I don't know what I'm asking, I just, I just want to make sure that the, the problem areas don't get kind of diluted by looking at the whole and there's a part that could be addressed more specifically.
I mean, most of that starts to trickle down into the campus improvement plans, because that generally speaking is where it would be addressed. I mean, I would say from the district level, we're clearly aware of math as an area of concern, and one of the things we look at is, are the resources that, that teachers have at their disposal, and are they using them? You know, that's, again, one thing that Tina has jumped, jumped in, you know, feet first, looking at, you know, what, I mean, I don't want to, it's not textbooks, right, because we don't, we don't have a lot of those anymore, but what, what resources are available to teachers? Are they using them? Is this an opportunity for us to look at something different or better for teachers? But, you know, in terms of mathematics, I mean, some of that is more intervention than anything. It's targeting the actual students and looking at individual student needs, and to be honest, they're kind of all over the place, right? And building in sections into the master schedule, you know, for students who need additional, sometimes it's not, I mean, it's not that they need targeted interventions into what they're learning, it's that they need scaffolded instruction of something that just was completely missed prior, right? And so, you know, I will say that, I know that's something we have, so we've doubled our number of interventionists, which is two to four, right?
Yay.
But, you know, that has doubled our capacity, though, to provide individualized intervention for students in grades, you know, K through five. At middle school, you know, particularly, particular to math, we have a specific elective for students called Math Masters, that's essentially a double block of math, but, but they're working, you know, it's a very small group, and it's specific for targeted instruction in mathematics. And we have literature lab, again, very small numbers for students who need additional, you know, reading support. We have two electives at high school that, that did not make this year, but we also have, I'm sure you've heard of the requirements of House School forty-five, forty-five. The number of students receiving intervention is probably greater than it's ever been in, in the history of the state of Texas, because we're required to provide thirty hours of intervention to every student who failed any subject in, in STAR last year. And so, for some kids, that's a hundred and twenty hours of individualized instruction this year, if they are a ninth grader. And so, and for some of our sixth graders, you know, that's ninety hours of intervention, which is a lot. So, I would say that, you know, a lot of our energy is focused on meeting individual student needs. I think instructionally, across the board, you know, we're in a, in a pretty decent place, there's clearly room for improvement, but some of that is the pivot that teachers have to make of like, I've been teaching this for twenty years, and this is what it's looked like, and now it doesn't, right? And so, helping teachers understand how to meet those vastly different needs than what we've seen in the past, right? And so, I think that's a lot of, you know, Michelle's support for our intervention processes and working with RTI coordinators on the campus and helping to just refine those processes of like, do we even know who these students are, and once we know who they are, what are we doing?
Thank you very much.
So, we'll need a motion.
Need a motion for those approval of the district improvement.
Campus and district.
Campus and district. Gerald made the motion. Rich seconded. Any additional questions, comments?
Statement. Principals, thank you for everything that I've been, golly, leaders, don't make a go, correct, we appreciate it, and if Darren doesn't get you anything for National Principals' Month.
I'm working on it.
Tick tock, tick tock.
Happy National Principals' Month, but thank y'all very much.
Hey, Ms. Walker hasn't floated this month, so that should be.
Yeah. I'm yeah. It's still. It's supposed to rain next spring. I think it's starting pouring, so. Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed?
Aye.
All right. Principals, thank y'all for being here.
Thank you so much.
Fair.
My second.
Okay, I'm, we'll go ahead and go on, we'll go back to now item number six. Possible approval of board operating procedures, procurement procedures. If you remember, a few months ago, we, we did a procurement, and there were some questions on that, and we kind of talked about the process. We've kind of been all over the board on, you know, do we have board members present to, to be a part of the selection committee when we have the, the scoring? And so, we talked about bringing this back at some point and, and developing it so we could put it in the board operating procedures. So, two or three years from now, you know, have another bond go out, you know, we need to procure something else here in the next couple of years, whatnot. Then we've got some guidelines, and depending on who's here, they, they'll have guidelines and operating procedures to follow, and then, you know, if, if y'all or us want to change, but at that point, we can, you know, just want, I think it's something we need to put in our, our policy, operating procedures, and so, just wanted to get some input on what direction we'd want to go.
I think we do have to outline it for sure as well, but I feel more, I personally feel more comfortable if the whole board was here.
Yeah.
Just to make sure that we, because it's policies and procedures that we're all going to be, have to abide by. And I didn't realize we were going to have two people out.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I would have already asked Darren to put it on the next one.
Okay, so, my, my question is, we've got two CMARs to judge, or to score, I should say judge. What is with the members that are here now? We've done it both ways. At the last CMAR, it was the program manager, our staff, and the architect. When we hired Weaver and Jacobs, that's who was on that, that group. You know, when we did the, the program manager that hired Casey and them, then we, we did have board members. So, is it okay for us to get with Huckabee, Casey, and a couple of us and, and go through the two companies that we have for the CMAR and then bring a recommendation to y'all?
I mean, I'm fine.
And then we can come back in November and with everybody here and decide.
I'm fine with that. I mean, I don't learn, like I said, I don't want to decide what, who the janitorial service is or the cafeteria service. I mean, I think some of the times we've had those committees that go through that process, because it's been huge, a bonnet issues. That is my, my interpretation. But I'm not, I'm not looking to micromanage.
Yeah, we'll look forward and then figure it out.
Okay.
You guys came back with a rubric before, right? You come back with a, I remember the one time we brought some folks in, it was really because nobody had any familiarity with anybody.
And that was with program managers and with architects.
That was the big one.
On, on the construction manager at risk, we did not, I think we brought a recommendation to y'all with Weaver and Jacobs. Showed you, I think maybe the rubric, can't, can't remember, but, but, yeah, on the CMAR with Weaver and Jacob, we brought a recommendation to you guys, and then you voted on it. So, if that's.
I think you can always see the rubric, because I've asked Jason for it before, and then he just, we'll send it over, even if something.
Yeah, I mean, we.
See what you're looking, what they're looking at, but I don't even know enough about it to be.
Casey, you got any thoughts on, or?
Will, I mean, sure, certainly it's up to the board, the policy's good. My, we see a lot of boards, a lot of this, a lot of districts. My, my friendly advice would be, certainly you strive away from any quorums and interview process.
Right, yeah.
We wouldn't do that with you on the other side, and it was fine, everybody was respectful. The reason I avoid that is, is a public meeting technically, and anybody can be there, including, you know, someone watching the team and all that. It's a little less professional from the vendor side.
And Casey's talking about interviewing.
Right.
Correct.
Right.
As far as, you know, other than that, so, so I would avoid that, it's just healthy. We've seen a couple of times, not here, but other classes, they're like, oh, this is just one of the public setting, everybody's getting along here, but if there was an issue somewhere, sometimes it's between vendors too, right, that you wouldn't know about, or one vendor sits in the other people's interview.
During an interview, you mean like before the board? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The only thing I would question on the next meeting, both of you, is just a better understanding of how the industry typically handles, like, how does?
I could do. I mean, tip, most of the time, probably eight percent plus, staff handles all of the CM at risk, pretty much any consultant you're picking, usually via committee, and they use it, I mean, like a public committee, just staff appointees led by your superintendent, maybe architect, you know, things like that, maybe coach, Jason, you know, why not? And recommends to the board, and it does keep the board in what I would say your normal role is, your set policy guidance board, you know, full veto power, of course.
Right.
Obviously, and you'd have the inside scoop and everything, but that also protects the board a little bit from the selection in case your friend is being interviewed, do I need to?
Right, right, yeah.
So, I like that, but that's probably eighty percent of what we see. The next level might be of non-formal amount of board members might sit in if they want to go back and talk to the board.
Yes.
And that's okay, too. But it's really running the schools.
It has been an issue, because Tom was the guy. Tom Ugel sat in on every single construction meeting ever.
Yeah, and I don't know anything about anything, and I'm saying that, Tom asked him about industry, so.
And you're talking about.
He was great.
Will, right, and, but it might be for architect selection, or it could be anything facility construction-related, is really what I'm talking about.
So, I think that's what we want to make sure that we're all on the same page on all the different selections, what do we want.
I'm fine, I don't, I shouldn't micromanage.
I think we're on the same.
I think so.
But we might want a full, a full board.
No, I can agree with that, right. I'm a ten and ten.
Agreed.
Right.
I agree.
But I did want Casey to kind of share, because he, he does this every week, you know.
For sure.
We got to go, so.
Yes. Do what you get to do.
Because we'll get that started next week first.
Yeah, that's fine, and I don't think that either of the two that are missing would have a problem with that, in my opinion.
Okay, well, we'll just table this and then come back next meeting, so.
I'm completely lost. I don't know where we're at. We've been bouncing around.
Okay, we will go to item number seven. Possible approval of fieldhouse and concession stand video cameras. We've got Cooper here, Cooper does a great job for us, working with Russell and the tech team. Excuse me. Casey, thank you for being here. These cameras that, and Cooper, speak up, if I speak out of turn here, these cameras are about eighteen years old, they're the original cameras that came with the, with the concession stand, fieldhouse area. They're, they're starting to fail, and so, what we want to do is, is we'd like to purchase sixteen new cameras, and it's there in the quote, it's all the hardware, everything to put them up. You know, I think it's important to have this coverage, because there's so many activities, so many people there, you know, ballgame, track meet, graduation, you know, whatever the case may be, practice. And, and, you know, back several years ago, those cameras did help us catch some kids that did some vandalism that were from another district, that they had some graphic graffiti up on our ticket booth, and so, you know, those cameras did, did come in handy. Cooper, I'll let you add anything to that.
Hundred percent pro cameras everywhere.
If you want to add anything to what I said.
Right now, those old cameras are a hundred percent now, so.
They're not even, nothing at all?
Even, even when they were up before that.
They were crappy, I remember seeing some of those images.
It wasn't really going to get much of anything anyway. We do have a couple newer Verkata cameras out by the ticket booth.
Right.
Maybe, oh, by the press box, we got to repair that one, the crate told me that one's kind of hanging off its mouth today, so.
But we can repurpose those.
Yes, yeah, I think there's five cameras in there that are kind of, I didn't do, I wasn't part of every single site block, and I know one for sure, I think, is there something in there that says like rip and repl?
Right.
So, Brightwatch identified some places where a different camera might work better for a different angle, and a lot of those are outdoor, so they're kind of difficult to replace.
Are they the same brand as what we have, so they can seamlessly integrate into our ecosystem?
Yeah, everything's going to be Verkata, yeah. That's like going forward, that's, they come with a standard ten-year warranty.
Be cloud-based?
Yeah, cloud-based, we don't have a physical server on site, so.
In terms of budget, money, Cooper and Russell and Mr. Webb and I have discussed this for probably six months now, we allotted this amount of money for this particular purpose, so it's not like, we didn't know this was coming, anticipated cost.
It's not that expensive. It's not yours, but it's, I mean, I'm pro camera, all the things, so, I'm a hundred percent now.
I just need a motion.
Yeah. Need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the camera.
Saye made the motion.
My second.
That was you, Rich?
Yes.
Rich seconded. Any questions, comments?
He said it was a standard ten-year warranty, but they're eight years old.
Well, the new one's a ten-year warranty, right.
Yes, for how they can, it's our standard ten-year warranty, I'm not sure what the video insight cameras or break time or sound songs were when they were purchased.
Okay. Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Aye.
Okay, we'll go to item number eight. This has been discussed for, you know, off and on, at different times. Door alarms, you know, we know that safety is becoming a big issue, been doing a lot of work with that, you know, safety committee, we've met a couple of times, we've kind of talked about it, and so, we, we had Cooper and Russell go out and, you know, get Brightwatch, because those will connect to the current door access that we have. We're going through by board, purchasing cooperative, and so, the quotes are there, and, you know, I, I said in my board notes, every campus, exterior door will have an alarm on it. The middle school, the intermediate is included in the middle school, so if you didn't see it, intermediate school, that's, that's the reason why.
Only because I looked, I see why it was so much, and I liked it with both campuses.
And so, the way this will work, it won't be an actual alarm that goes off or beep, but what it will do, it will connect to our, it will send an email and or text to anybody that we want to receive those. So, you know, they'll connect them, and then, you know, we'll get with each campus, and, you know, we, and Cooper, correct me if I'm wrong, but we could actually, if teachers are in that area, we could say, okay, you know, it's going to go to these three or four teachers and all the administrators and the front desk, or, you know, so we can put those numbers and emails into the, the system, and then when that door is left open, and we can default that, is it four seconds, eight seconds, ten seconds, then we can set that, and then if that door is open for that X amount of time, then it will send an alarm to everybody, or an alert to everybody that we've programmed into that system. Let's see, what else?
Is that a, is that lack of an audible alarm setting, or is the lack of a feature?
Kind of like the noise of, of an alarm.
We had looked at an actual door rob alarm, but they're battery-based, the ones that, that we had Brightwatch look at as well. They said it was kind of going to be problematic to integrate those unless you just wanted to have the audible alarm on there before a rob, and then, who knows, you know, you'd have to figure out how to bypass that if you needed to have a door open. They're battery-operated, so the longevity of them is questionable, and I'm not sure we even got a price on those, because.
After looking at them, they, to me, with the batteries like they were and how expensive it was to replace the batteries, I felt like this would be a better way to go.
Are you talking to points of value?
Yeah, I'd say, you know, it's great that we send five emails or twenty-five emails out. I just assume in the middle of my lesson that the teacher across the street will grab it, or that the administrator at the front desk will come grab it. When after two minutes, three minutes, whatever it is, if an alarm, audible goes out. When after two minutes, three minutes, whatever it is, if an alarm, an audible goes out, a student might pull it closed, right? Like, that's what I was kind of thinking in my head. I wouldn't say instead of, I just didn't know if it was a setting or a feature.
I would love to have that alarm, but I don't think, from what I understood from Russell, that it would have that type of local alarm to go off, so.
So my question would be more along points of failure. So I would assume Wi-Fi, electricity or internet, electricity.
Yep.
And if you had an audible, then you would have that point of failure because.
Yeah, just be a battery powered alarm, yeah. I mean, it's definitely something that we could look into getting as an additional piece of the door.
Are a lot of other districts using the system?
I, I really couldn't tell you. I hadn't heard of anybody, I mean, I couldn't tell you if, if any schools have done any alarms throughout the district.
I assume it would be super corner case or about Chris here, internet went down.
I don't know, that's just my, my point and one of the failures.
True.
I mean, it's all Vercata hardware that would be installed by Brightwatch. And Vercata, I think, is in development, doing an audible piece. I'm not sure what kind of would be wired in. I don't know anything about it yet, but I know that Brightwatch said they have something that they're developing for that specific, you know, door prop alarm. It's not a thing they make. Have, be wired in and have a battery backup of some kind, so that.
These are also tied to our cameras. So if, if something happens and it will, it will start recording, is that right? The, when the door is opened, it will be recording on what was happening at that.
Yeah, that's where I'd be most interested in that. So the cameras, are there cameras on every exterior door?
Not every exterior door. We hope to get there one day, especially not the ones that don't have access control where you swipe a fob. But the ones that have monitoring, we can tie the closest camera back toward that area if it's possible. But not every, not every single entrance, like a rither room entrance, probably not going to have a close camera or something like that.
Or on our access swap card.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it would be during a certain period of time, during a day when a door is not supposed to be opened. It is opened immediately, there's some eyes on it and somebody is forced to look at that location. And not, you know, in general, is it, you know, that, hey, that, that door was propped open? You know, some sort of positive, you know, confirmation that that's been checked out. It's been resolved.
I think, I think that's what we would like to get to is having a camera close enough to see an individual at every single exterior door. And somehow, like, you know, price wise, what that would be.
Cooper, I don't know if you have the answer to this, but let's say an alarm is triggered, the text message emails go out to 25 different people. If it, like Kevin was saying, if it remains unchecked, do they send another one? Or if it, somebody goes out and closes it, do they send the confirmation that it's been addressed to everybody?
I will have to look into that. I don't know. We haven't messed with that feature yet, so.
If there was just anybody, as long as somebody responds to it in some reasonable amount of time, okay.
Or it probably will just show that it's closed, that the, that the connection has been made back with the brake sensor.
I mean, it's great to have the indicator, but then it's got to be some, some action. It's just a.
I know when you're looking at the phone now in the app, we have an access control app for Vercata. You can see at a glance that the door that you're looking at is either red, open, or green, locked, or.
One of the two.
So I think there's some, something that we can do. I just, we just haven't messed with that a bunch yet. So I'm going to look into and see if there's something that somebody can go, yeah, the pound's locked and then send it or shut.
I'm not sure the technology is great, the team didn't do diligence. I mean, back to your point of failure, it's not going to be the technology, it's going to be a human. I mean, anytime it's on the bag at a school, nine times out of 10, I have no data to prove this, but I'm assuming it's because some procedure or some process wasn't followed. So I'd just be curious, whose job is it on each campus to make sure that these alerts are responding to? Has to be like a person's job? I don't know.
Well, and that'd be something we would, you know, make sure, you know, somebody would have to be responsible for that. And, you know, we would maybe have, you know, in that area, let's just say back here on this southwest hall, you know, Ms. Sarin, Andrew Larkin assigned four or five teachers. And it's okay, you know, not only would the principals get it, the front desk get it, Mike Dwork, who's the parking lot attendant, get it, but those four teachers, because they're, they could be the quickest there, you know, to get there. Because, you know, the thing is, you know, the principals may have to, you know, they may be at their desk or they may be over here in the culinary arts and then have to. So we would need to make sure we communicate, Kevin, what you're saying on who is responsible, ultimately responsible to make sure that's locked or checked in.
I mean, it sounds like you need them. The stuff wants to put the.
Yeah.
Devices.
And then see what it works, yeah. See how it goes.
I think the noise is important. We have some type of noise in the door, point, whether it's to let somebody know.
I would like the noise. It's just the one that they showed us, and I showed it to Jason as well. It just didn't look like, I would think over time, they would, it would, it just wouldn't be as effective. I mean, it's just me looking at it.
Did you set a potential feature update for that?
Yes, with Vercata, right. And I'm going to ask that question of Vercata's support tomorrow to see if there's something that they can.
Yeah, I guess somebody didn't respond, then it is not.
Yeah, but that, that also is a feature that they're going to be, or are developing now, as far as I know, the audible part. I don't know details.
Yeah, if we get the framework in for it, I'm sure it will evolve into.
I'd like to mention that this would have to be bond funded. I mean, it can't be a, it can't be a local cost. It would have to come out of 2021. We just don't have 200K to.
Unless we take it out of fund balance. We'd use our contingencies.
So we had 200 grand in 2020.
So the, the intermediate school conversion to admin was about $3.4 million. That never happened. We also have about $800,000 in land left that we can potentially dip into. I mean, it's there, it just would need to be allocated to that specific purpose.
Your thoughts on the differences between pulling from reserves versus bond?
So in 21, 22, each school year, days, the, the cost, I think I probably mentioned this to you guys before, the cost to operate in the district is about $60,000. That leaves us, our fund balance leaves us about 125 days of operating, which is plenty, right? Which is great. If state says you need 75. Because our new budget has become so large with our cost and recapture, that 125 days and $60,000 a day has changed to $100,000 a day and 76 days of operating. So we're right on the cusp now at this point of a financial, not crash is the wrong word, but superior rating.
How did that happen?
When our.
With the recapture.
It was a recapture.
Because that's part of your daily.
I remember the hundreds being communicated, the 120 on the 76. Like, that would have been in the.
Yeah, it's going to be, I mean, if that come out in your final audit, that 76 is just a.
Wow.
So, I mean, if we start talking, dipping into fund balance, then that 76 becomes compromised. And it's, it, it varies from a score from 10 to 8 on your first report, right? And then 8 to 6. I just prefer that that first report stay in a good position.
And if we got bond money that can do it, you know. And, you know, and the other thing is, you know, enrollment, where it's at, you know, we're going to have to see an increase next year for us to get back in.
Yeah, I was just on the board of services.
Yeah. I will, I'm sorry.
I was just going to tell me, Rich.
Yeah, go ahead. I'll, in discussion, I'll say something.
I mean, we purchased the camera equipment, the door alarm equipment as recommended by the staff.
I'll second it.
Kevin made the motion. Who's the second? Gerald made the seconded.
I will say, our Lions Club, I've talked to Dick Wetherby multiple times. The Lions Club, their committee has talked about wanting to help out with safety. So they have guaranteed us a $5,000 check to, and they wanted to go to alarms on the door. And, you know, I told myself, it's going to be pretty expensive, because I'll be honest with you guys, at one time, we thought it was going to be about $350,000. And, you know, it's 201, 03, whatever the number was. But Dick did say that the Lions Club voted last, last month to provide us with a $5,000 check and it could be more later. So I wanted to give a shout out to, to the Lions.
For the reason. Thanks, though, for installing number one.
One camera.
204.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five o.
Okay, moving on to item number 10, possible approval of COVID days. We've done this resolution before. District just, real close to us approved same resolution this week. We've had about 17 staff members, this was as of Thursday of, I think, last week, to have COVID, starting the first workday of, of the year. We've had 17 staff members. We've had some kids. You know, it's, it's not as big as it was. We don't, we're not seeing the, the absences from, from our, our kids like we did, you know, a year ago, a year and a half ago. But we, we do have some staff members that have it. The resolution is basically the same resolution that we passed previously. You know, if we want to move this direction to give each, each staff member five days to miss, we can do that. If it's a confirmed case. And then, you know, we could either do it through December, whatever, I think 15th, or we could do it through the rest of the year. You know, we can leave that open. I mean, we can decide tonight on what direction we want to go. But like I say, you know, we're still getting a few. We had a couple just about a week, a week ago, none was taken. So, you know, it's just something to, you know, tell the staff to, hey, stay home, get well. And then show, you know, we do appreciate them. And, you know, a lot of these younger teachers that only start out with that number of days, they get sick or whatnot. This can save them from losing money, so. Our subs list is getting better, I will say that. I don't know what we're up to now, but.
Ninety-four. And we have a hundred percent fill rate for tomorrow, which is a Friday.
That's the first in two years.
That's the first, so we're, we're getting here.
So every subposition that they fill.
Derek, this is for a case confirmed with a staff member, not an immediate family member?
We can put a, an immediate family member in there. I mean, it's, it's a resolution, you know, that I want to put out there. The old one was a staff member, I mean, not staff member, but a, a immediate family. I don't know if a lot of people, but we can certainly add that. I mean, we can adjust this resolution the way, the way we want to. And then what's the date that y'all want? Do y'all want to reassess at Christmas or, you know, extend for the year?
How many have we had out?
Seventeen so far.
I mean, I think the December line is just an arbitrary line. COVID's not going away. I would advocate to the end of the school year and be addressing on an academic year basis.
I mean, some schools are, have passed it, a lot of schools have said, well, you know, they haven't, they hadn't had as many cases, you know. But when I started seeing seventeen, I felt like it'd be something we need to at least look at, so.
I'm not doing it for the rest of this academic year, but at some point, we have to decide, we have to get that COVID's never going away. So we don't do this for the flu, we don't do this for other things.
But there's also not a mandate from the CDC saying you have to stay home.
Well, it's not even, it's not even the CDC. Yeah, it's not the sequel. Department of State Health Services currently has a five-day exclusion period. There's not a, there's not a mandatory exclusion period for cold and flu. And so, you know, basically what would, I mean, if you want my opinion, what would make the most sense is to drop something like that when, when dishes comes out with a regulation that's similar, right? So for everything else, it's fever-free for 24 hours without medication, without, you know, no vomiting for 24 hours without medication. You know, that's kind of the rule for everything else. COVID still does have a five-day mandatory exclusion and so, you know, I mean.
And the CDC changed all theirs. That's what the whole thing is crazy. The CDC is fever-free 24 hours.
Yeah, I think, and I think we're probably headed in that direction, but right now dishes is, I mean, like, so if, when we're made aware of it, we're required to exclude them from attendance for five days.
You raise a good point. Maybe that it's not a date. It's a, through the end of the school year or when guidelines change from State Health.
There you go. Department of State Services.
Whatever ones are.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point. I like that. Yeah, I suspect that they will, right? But at current, that's not what it says and so.
Yeah, I get it. I mean, you got to do what you got to do.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I like saying, do it like exactly like Kevin said.
August 8th to end of school year or change in guidelines?
Change in our, our State Health program.
They have the exclusion chart from.
Department.
State Health Services.
Okay. All right. And do we want to add immediate family or?
And just so they're not clear what you're communicating, if it's a teacher and they have to keep it out?
That was the question. So the first communication was the date is going to be dependent on the state five, five-day rule. And then the other question I had was, I think, to your point.
Yeah.
Your kid.
We can either just do employee only or immediate family, like child, something like that.
Can you say dependent child instead of like, because if you're.
Well, I would just.
Your fully grown husband has it.
Well, because we, I think the last resolution had a, I think it was a family member, a immediate family member.
I would call it, I think the dependent, I would, if you're going down, I don't know if I'd add child. Because there may be staff members who have.
A dependent.
Who's technically a dependent. I don't know. I think the intent is if they are caring for them.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
I'm just one voice, that's.
Yeah, no, you're right. All right, so just, just to make sure that we're on the same page. We'll say, starting December 8th, that's when our work, or August 8th, that's when our, our work day started. To the end of the school year or change in Department of State Services or Health Service. And it will be illness of employee due to confirmed case of COVID. And another bullet point would be a dependent of the family, or dependent members, family members.
Dependent of the staff member.
Yeah.
Say that again, Rick.
Dependent of the staff member.
Can I ask that? We had three cases over the summer of people on extended contracts that used their regular leave days. Is it possible to backdate that to May?
Yes.
When was last, our last?
It ended the last day of school, the resolution was.
Three cases over the summer and it's, and in some cases, well, we didn't have COVID leave during the summer, so they, they had to use their, they had to use their own.
The intent makes a whole. So I would advocate for not having a gap in the summer because we have some team members that have to work during this.
Okay. So we'll go back to May, whatever it was, May, I'll put it in the resolution. Okay, anything else?
Now, I'm just playing devil's, okay, so didn't we make them bring a doctor's note?
Yes, they're still going to do that.
They still have to.
And they've done that.
They've had it before, how are they going to?
We've been.
Gina's been keeping up with.
Because we told them. You mean the ones that went retro, that were doing the retro?
Yeah, yeah.
We, we have.
We have those.
Okay. In the event that this happened, we wanted to make sure, so.
Need a motion for, as that was written.
I move we approve it as, as it is written.
Rich made the motion. He said he seconded. Any additional comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five o.
Okay, going now to number 11. I may ask to move forward with this. Approval of JJ AEP MOU. Not a lot of changes. There was a change in the price, which, you know, we're in a county of more than 125,000, so we have to be a member of a JJ. And, you know, the, the cost is changing. I had the high school principals, cause that's the one who normally uses JJ, I read through it, I read through it, not a lot of changes, the price did go up on a title five offense. There were some changes in section twelve, but it was nothing that really made a big difference, it was just a lot of wording that was changed. And after reading through it and getting with the principals, we were good with wanting to bring this to the board. It is an MOU, and so I would like to recommend that we approve the MOU for twenty two, twenty three school year.
I approve, we.
You approve?
We approve the move for the.
Gerald approves, it's all good. Gerald made the motion, Kevin did you second?
I did.
Kevin seconded.
Wait, let me ask y'all this, moving forward, I mean, could we just put this on?
Put it on, because I would put it on, consider the end, and we do the same thing every single.
Okay, I just.
Yeah.
Holler, remind me that next year.
Yeah.
For MOUs, just JJ, like four H, JJ.
We actually stick it in there and if we need to pull it out, the board.
Yeah, you can always pull it out, yeah, okay.
Motion is second, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Five oh.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Cause I'm frozen, solid, cause it's like.
Consider agenda, should be in your packet.
Everybody, everybody go over their minutes, financials, need a motion, don't walk out of there.
I move we approve the conservative.
Which made the motion, he said he seconded, or Gerald did, Gerald seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, real quick on superintendent's report, I'll be sending you some pictures of our middle school gym. Don't know if I've told you, but Airmark, Scott, previous district manager, have a lot of respect for. He, he took full responsibility of, from what the other district manager was, you know, kinda shy away from. He opened the insurance claim and Airmark is paying for the total re-sand, repaint.
Yeah, that's awesome.
And so it's eighteen thousand dollar cost and Airmark filed a claim. Matter of fact, they should, they should be, all the painting is, should be done tomorrow, the waxing should be done this weekend and the kids will be back on it on Monday. They started last Friday, we had a buy this week, and so the coaches felt like if they could practice the lower gym, we were off two days, and so we felt like this was the best time to do it. So Newman Flooring out of Hutto has come in, and I'll send pictures from when they first started sanding.
There's a progress picture there, it's up to.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I knew he'd put one in, I, I didn't see him, he told me he was gonna put them in. I went by today and took some pictures and they've, they're starting to scrape all the excess paint off, and so I feel like they'll start waxing tomorrow or Saturday, but he said on Monday we would be able to get back on it, so.
It's awesome.
Yeah.
It's gonna be blue. It's gonna be actually blue.
It's gonna be actually blue and, and.
And not ice skate.
And the lines are white and, and the floor is really pretty, you know, y'all seen, seen the floor. So transportation, I'll, I'll talk about that, just give you an update, right now we have seven routes and seven drivers.
Stop it.
We have three, three other drivers that will help on field trips, they have certain times that they can drive, they're not available, like one can only drive on Saturdays and after six PM. Another one is AM, up to eight AM and weekends only, so we've got a lot of.
Ankle bracelets also.
Got a lot of variables there, in training, and this is what I mainly wanna give y'all, we have three, three route drivers, one is about two to three weeks away. And then we have two drivers that are about five to seven weeks away from being fully trained to where they can get on a route. We do have some backup drivers, we have one driver that is two to three weeks away, that's. Okay, and then we have another one that's three to four weeks away, and then we have another one that's five to seven weeks away. So here, probably by Thanksgiving, we should have a good number of drivers, plus our coaches. I will say our mayor, Ed Tidwell, is getting certified, and he said he would be a backup driver and a trip driver once he gets certified. So he's a fireman, so he's off on some days, and so he's willing to, to pitch in, so that's kind of where we're at. We're also needing some more buses as far as the wear and tear, so we're getting, well, we've already got some bids just came in, I think this week. We got three quotes from three different bus companies, and so we'll be bringing that recommendation to you at some point.
When we, when we have enough bus drivers for, they need bus drivers. Make sure we're not gonna just have them sitting.
Now, I will say this, the issue that we're having is we're running out of space to park. Right now, they're, they're double parked, triple parked, and so those are some things, we might get rid of one bus, try to sell it, and that'd give us, you know, still plus one of what we have right now. So, but we're, we're looking at that and seeing what we need to do on that. Other thing, the other thing I had was I know y'all had kind of talked about AT&amp;T service. Cooper, when did y'all talk to AT&amp;T last week?
Most recently today.
Okay.
About the, the, what was that, the FirstNet stuff?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's basically, it's firstnet.com is the website.
Let, let me say this, it's something totally different than what Michael Bridges just, just told us. But, and I don't know if that's an inside pool or this is customers getting treated.
Just grease the, grease the wheels for us, that isn't.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know too much about it, other than it's like a different type of service. And basically, how it was explained to me by Justin, our rep for, for education. He said that you basically would have ten of these maybe, and administrators or principals would carry one, and it would be basically a boosted signal of some kind, I'm not sure how it works. But they would have almost guaranteed access, if, you know, even if cells were jammed up and et cetera, et cetera.
Would it be a different phone, or would it be?
Yes, it would be a different phone, it would be, I guess, a service loaded on to a normal, maybe a different type of phone, I don't know.
It's a unique spectrum band that they have reserved for first responders.
Right, so we don't collide with public.
Yeah, so everything else, anyways, it's got a unique channel through.
We've got Justin hopefully coming in with a demo soon, with a couple of units, so we can test out.
And then there was a booster as well that was pretty expensive?
Russell had talked to AT&amp;T about boosters.
Yeah.
And I think what they came up with was that was gonna be kind of controversial.
Yeah, I think.
You'd have to put them in so many places and run stuff back and it would, I mean, it's such a large area out here that would need coverage, but we could definitely get quotes for that stuff.
I think that was, what Rusty was saying was a lot more expensive than what Cooper was mentioning on, on the service y'all were talking about.
Those are macros, are those gas systems that they put in, for stadiums, I think they're gonna.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, so I know Laurie said, you know, that's something y'all, we wanted to discuss, I put it on and I got Cooper in the call and I finally got some information back, but we got Mr. Bridges here that. So do y'all, I mean, we're gonna go ahead and, and look at what that looks like, and, you know, mainly for ball games and whatnot, that way, you know, if something does happen, our principal will have it on, you know, because when we've had some other things, I've had. There's some nights I can make a phone call from the stadium and there's been nights that I haven't. But hopefully between Mr. Bridges and then us looking at this demo, and we'll bring back some information to you at the next board meeting about what Cooper's talking about, so. You think we could have it back by then, Cooper?
In a month.
Yeah, okay.
We might even still have the unit on demo to bring in.
Okay, okay. All right, that's all I've got.
Any truth to one or all of the campus not getting picked up for UIL, going from three A to four A, and then what is that all about?
Yeah, it's, it's been a, it's been a mess, I'll say that. UIL, so in four A, you make up your own district, because you have Burnet, that's got two elementaries, you have Gerald, that has X number elementary, you have Marble Falls. And, you know, I was, we were under assumption that we would all meet as a group, matter of fact, I talked to Keith McBurnett just on Tuesday, and he says it's never been like this before. No communication, and so I'll back up from the very beginning, UIL, in years past, this is okay, spring sports, that's cross country, UIL academics, volleyball, track, softball. Marble Falls is the district chair, they're supposed to organize a meeting, everybody comes together and then you separate out. We still have yet to have that meeting, so other, other schools have already contacted other schools and come together to form a UIL elementary competition. So talk from the sevens, being this late, cause other schools have already got four schools or six schools. We really don't have a place to go, so what I told Ms. Evans, and I've done this in the past, we would have our own UIL, to where we could have more of our kids participate. Same, same events, same spelling list, same, you know, all the events, instead of us only being, put three in an event, we can put six or eight. Do it this year, talk to each other schools and see if we can maybe ju- jump into a district for, for next year. And we may say this is the best way to go, to give our kids more opportunity to be in all the different events, because when you do a UIL, they set a schedule and, and a kid may only be able to do one or two events. If we're doing it our own, we can, we can develop the conflict schedule that best fits our kids, so that's what we're doing this year, we are gonna have UIL, it'd just be within the district, middle school. Because everybody only has basically one middle school, we'll have the same district, and then the high school will be in the district, so.
I feel like we went through this when we went from two A to three A too, that first year, we had to do our own district, just our district had to do UIL, when we made that, it's something about that transitional year.
Yeah, and.
It just seems familiar, like we've done this before.
I have not been too pleased with, I mean, I just found out Tuesday, we're the softball chair, never knew it. And all the reason I knew is cause Burnet found out there was a baseball chair, and Gerald had a, just assigned everybody, okay, you're this, you're that, you're this, and.
Who's the governing body?
It is, is, their, their AD is what took it over, cause I, I talked to their Gerald superintendent and she was like, guys, I didn't realize how that worked, I let the superintendent, superintendent handle it, I mean my, my AD. And I didn't realize that.
So how does Gerald get picked to be it, they just started talking first, or, I don't know, I don't know how it works, I'm not trying to.
Well, no.
I honestly don't know how it works.
I thought it was gonna be Marble Falls, matter of fact, I called Chris at, at Marble Falls in August and said, hey, when are we gonna have our spring meeting? Cause he was elected spring chair, I'm working on it, should be in the next couple of weeks, well, here we are in October, and I think we have a meeting next Tuesday at eight thirty. So it's, I, I think some of the superintendents don't, do not, they've never been in that position of having to deal with the UIL and how it works, I, I will say the Gerald superintendent was like, was asking Keith, and I would explain how it should work. You know, cause, you know, she, she turned it over to the AD and the AD just kinda ran with it, but didn't follow all the protocols and things like that, so.
It sounds like something an AD would need to be kind of, I mean, who do you, who do you turn to? I mean, I know there's academic UILs, but.
Normally the superintendents organize the meetings, they get everybody together, they run the meetings, and they, they're the ones that should be voting on all the rules, all the contests. You know, we use coaches to make the schedules, to make the rules, but the superintendent's voting, you know, unless the superintendent can't be there, then he'll send his AD, your high school principal, or someone like that, so.
It's crazy.
You know, I'll be honest with you, and I told Keith this, I said, you know, I thought I was kind of, you know, us being a small kid on the block, that I just didn't know how things worked, he said, no, it's never worked this way, he's, it's never been this unorganized, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's all I've got.
Alrighty, it's the last thing, right?
I got just a couple things, or two or three things in close session.
Alright, eight oh five, take a break.